That's what you get. Sorry, you don't have Penny as a buffer here.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. And I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education on this Monday, February 10th, 2025. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'll go there. All right, next, thank you. Next, we'll review and approve the agenda for February 10th, 2025 today. Erica, second. Brendan, all in favor? Penny, that's unanimous, thank you. And then if we can get a motion to approve the minutes for both January 21st, 2025, let's do them separately. So approve the minutes for January 21st, 2025. Can I get a motion, please? Matt, second. Brendan, all in favor? Thank you. And then same, if I can get a motion to approve the minutes for February 3rd, 2025, that was a special meeting. Matt Campbell, Matt Wechsler, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And then comments from the public. To ensure that the public's right to be heard, the board set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes would be allotted each speaker, a maximum of 15 on each topic. Would anybody like to approach the board? No, seeing as there is none, we'll move on to reports and recognition, which we're all very excited about. Curriculum presentation with the classroom and math coaches.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to introduce an amazing team of teachers who can head up to the podium if they'd like. And these, this amazing team will be giving a presentation tonight on our district goal that's related to the classroom coach and the math coach. It gives me pleasure to introduce Dr. Susan Bliss, Jennifer Eldridge, who is our classroom coach, Mary Fisher, who is our math coach, and Jen DePonte, who is our K through eight coordinator. In addition to the presentation that you have in front of you, I did want to just bring your attention to the appendix that I attached. It is the four domains that we'll be referencing tonight that are related to our teaching framework that's in our evaluation system. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that. But without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bliss.
Great, thank you so much, Jill. Good evening. How about those Eagles? Sorry, but I am a Philly girl, so I was really excited last night. I'm sorry if I'm offending any Kansas City fans, but I did want to just mention that one of the things that struck me afterwards, listening to everything, is about the coaching, right? And how they were talking about this Eagles coach. And what really struck me is the way the players talked about him as somebody who creates culture, creates relationships, and makes sure that everybody matters. And so I just thought about the content knowledge of that coach, the incredible knowledge, and the ability to build those relationships. And I thought of our incredible coaches. And I'm really excited tonight to be able to talk to you about all the amazing work that they are doing. Their expertise in working shoulder to shoulder with our teachers and building those relationships has really been kind of our secret sauce in terms of our academic excellence and maintaining and really working toward that excellence in New Canaan. I'm going to start with the board goals, the Board of Education goals from this year, which you know well, but Goal Three is to promote and support innovative and exemplary research-based professional practices in order to continuously enhance teaching and extend learning. And I think this really epitomizes your commitment to teaching and learning across the district and how important that is to us. I think we are going to be talking tonight about objective number one, and under that, the objective number one is really about the New Canaan Teacher Evaluation and Professional Learning, which we affectionately call TEPEL. And that has really been a place that we can go to to think about focusing our coaching as well as assessing the coaching. So we're going to be talking about that a little bit tonight. It really is exciting to have these coaching positions and our under-objective one, we have C and D. And tonight, our objective is really to review with you and share a little bit about what our coaches have been doing and how successful it has been. I think it really does reflect our core belief that academic excellence stems from continuous teacher growth, and that's really what we're going to be talking about tonight. So your, in your packet, as Jill said, you have the Effective Teaching Framework. At a glance, we have seven domains, and this is something that we'll be referring to tonight. Jen will be talking about our classroom coach, Jen Eldridge, will be talking about the learning environment. And Mary Fisher, our math coach, will be talking about Domain Two and Domain Three as well. So what's interesting here is these are all really sophisticated skills that we are asking our teachers to develop. And if you think about that, we need to develop them through constant mentoring, through constant feedback, and those are the things that we're really going to talk about tonight. Our coaches do an amazing job in cultivating these in our teachers, but it takes a lot of work, so we'll be talking about that. So you probably are wondering, what is this coaching approach? How does it work? Our coaching approach really focuses on developing that professional growth of teachers. They have an incredible depth of knowledge. We have 40 years of experience here between the two coaches, 20 years each in the classroom. They take that knowledge, they work on the application of knowledge, they look at data for each individual teacher, the classroom, and they target, and you'll hear more about that, areas for improvement. And they do a lot of work around developing their own coaching strategies to be the most effective that they can be. So whether it is modeling a novel way to show a new math strategy or helping a student who is dysregulated in the classroom, they are incredible at really being able to help our teachers with that. And again, we know that we have sort of a core belief that everything we do in terms of developing our teachers goes back to student improvement and student outcomes. So that's really what we're looking for in our coaching approach. A couple of years ago, we had such a commitment to domain, to coaching, that we decided to add another domain to TEPEL, and that's around our coaching evaluation. So as you can see in the column that's gray, there is a number of ways that we do evaluate our coaches. Knowledge and skills is one of those areas. Data analysis and application is another area. Knowledge of adult learners is a third area, and finally, communication with stakeholders. So this has been really an invaluable document for us that focuses our work as coaches and also allows us to continually evaluate. Our ultimate goal is to really see those shifts in instructional practice that we can really know that they lead to student growth. And I will say, one thing that I'm always amazed by is thinking about each of those individual coaching sessions, they're affecting 20 kids in every classroom. So if we think about impact, that's really a large number of our students that we've been able to impact this year. We know that there's a wealth of data about why coaching is so important. One of the things that's well researched in the literature is something called collective teacher efficacy, and that really is about the collective belief of teachers that they can influence student outcomes. That belief can be developed, and we are really focusing on this with our teachers. These are things that our coaches do every day. They create opportunities for collaboration, they develop shared goals, they analyze student data and provide actionable feedback. And in the graph, what you see is the culmination of a lot of research. It's actually 1,200 meta-analyses that Professor John Hattie reviewed, and what he did is try to look at what are the educational variables that lead to student performance? And he rated those variables. So collective teacher efficacy, which is really what we're working on as coaches, came out second of 252 variables. And this study has been replicated time and time again, and in fact, in one of the studies, it came out number one. And I told everyone I wouldn't get too geeky about the numbers, but if you want to ask me later, those are effect sizes, and these are amazing effect sizes for social sciences. You do not get effect sizes of this level. I would be thrilled if I had an effect size of one in the 1.57. Anyway, I do digress. But long story short, we have great data that says that what we're doing is really one of the most important things we can do in education to help our kids, which is really I also just wanted to mention that there's been some demographic changes, and it's interesting to think about that in terms of the coaching and how important it is at this point. We have had a 74% increase in new teachers in our district. Back in 2021, there were 31 new teachers, and now it's at 54. We know that, I should just say that this is non-tenured teachers, so that's, we're defining it by teachers who have four or less years of experience. But what's interesting to me, and I was surprised to learn this, is that new teachers often only have one class in math in their teacher preparation programs or one class in classroom management. So they don't come to us with a lot of experience, which is why we think the coaching is even more important as we're trying to help our teachers. And I was reminded of my own experience. I was a college professor before I was able to have this wonderful position in New Canaan. And I remember my first year of teaching, and I, I remember being completely overwhelmed. I may or may not have been crying in the car on multiple occasions at the amount of work that I had and what I had to teach. And I thought about it, and I thought, you know, when we are training doctors or attorneys or CEOs, you are working shoulder to shoulder with them over years, and you have that mentoring. In classrooms, it can be quite isolating, right? You're on your own. So the idea that we have coaches who can mentor, who can give feedback, who can consistently help us, I think is really essential, and particularly when we see the demographics that are changing. I also noted that we, one last thing on that, that there is, there was a recent study about teachers leaving the profession, and one of the major reasons they cited that they were leaving was challenges in the classroom in terms of behavior management. So on that count as well, I think it's really important that shout out to our coaches to be able to do that. So again, thank you for your support, and I think that this is really such a crucial part of what we're doing to make sure that we continually are really growing our teachers, we're growing their ability to, to have those skills and competencies and really the support that gives them a sense of community and a sense of support that they need so desperately. So with that, I'm going to introduce Jen Eldridge, who is our classroom coach. I just have to say that Jen is, as you will see, a bundle of energy and enthusiasm, and we have been so lucky to have her. Teachers will stop me in the hallway and tell me about all the great things that she's done. So Jen, turn it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bliss, and thank you for the opportunity to come up and talk to you a little bit about my work. I'm going to try to stick to my notes here. Those of you who've had to sit through my open house presentation know that I tend to go on, especially when I'm excited about something, so I'm going to try to stick, stick to the plan here and, and not, you know, not digress. But as Dr. Bliss says, my work as the classroom coach focuses really on Domain One of the Effective Teaching Framework, particularly creating respectful learning environments with high student engagement. This includes supporting teachers in the development of student social skills, behavior management, refining those routines and transitions, and even optimizing the physical classroom environment. So our work as coaches follows what we refer to as a coaching cycle. And we begin on the top with a target, so we target key areas for improvement in the classroom using data. Working alongside the teacher, we then create a plan, an action plan with clear goals and strategies. During the implementation phase, we're providing ongoing support and coaching, and progress is evaluated continuously, and successful practices are expanded across the classroom to maximize impact. So what I was going to do is share with you an example of a coaching cycle to illustrate its impact. So at the start of the year, I meet with all new teachers, I observe their classrooms, analyze data, look for trends, and identify those focus areas. So for this example that I'm going to walk you through, the goal was to reduce the transition time between social studies and writing in the classroom. Initially, it took about two to three minutes for the students to transition from social studies to writing. So tightening this routine was really critical to recapturing that instructional time. This is a photo of a class in transition, so they are putting materials away from, from one part of the day, then they need to get the other materials out for the next activity and sort of be then ready on the carpet for the teacher to begin instruction. Some of our teachers make this look really easy, right? If you've ever been the mystery reader and you, the teacher calls the kids to the carpet, and they just, they just come to the carpet and they sit magically, and their bodies are to themselves, and their eyes are on you, it's like, it's magic, and it doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of really important skills that go into making that, that happen. So that's why targeting transitions can be really important. So the desired outcome for this example was that students would transition effectively and independently, minimizing that lost instructional time. So there are as many as, you know, 20 to 30 transitions in, in a day, even, you know, when you go younger, it's probably close to 40. So improving this routine has a really significant impact on maximizing the time for instruction. This photo is the end result of a transition. So the kids are on the carpet, they have the materials they need, the teacher is ready to begin instruction, and actually, she started before I could even take the picture because it was just so smooth, and they just were able to begin right away. So once we have our target, right, we have our plan, so obviously, we're working in Domain One here specifically with routines and transitions. And our goal, again, is reduce that transition time. We wanted it to be 30 seconds or less, and we were going to have incremental improvements of 30 seconds per week over the course of four weeks. So our baseline data showed that our transition was taking about two and a half minutes, roughly, so we wanted to see that slowly, slowly decrease. So when we implemented the plan, it, it really included analyzing videos of the transitions, right? So I would take a video of the class in transition, and we'd just kind of watch it and see what's going on here. You know, oh my gosh, like, there's all these materials over here, and maybe some should be over here, and you're really just digging deep into what's happening. I modeled how to execute a transition effectively. We studied a few chapters of a book, and in this picture, observed another teacher who was an expert in transitions. One thing I love about this particular example is we really involved the kids in the problem solving, right? So we got the kids around, we're like, listen, it's taken a really long time for us to finish up, you know, social studies and get into writing. Like, what do you think we can do about that? And they came up with solutions, and then those solutions became critical pieces of the puzzle. So they're coming up with their solutions, and then they're obviously more invested in it, and then we can implement. And during that phase, we're constantly reflecting on what's working and what we need to adjust, and we're encouraging the students to reflect as well. So we monitor progress with checkpoints and student feedback throughout the, throughout our time. So while there were occasional setbacks, like Halloween, for example, it's a little tricky, a little tricky that day. As you can imagine, overall, progress was steady, and, and the students were really highly engaged in this. They were really excited to see, you know, once they got to the carpet and were ready, and the teacher, you know, revealed how much time it took, they were so excited to see and track their improvement. And then, and so once, once we have that and we meet that goal, right, we want to expand that, right? So it's, it's not just about that one transition from one subject to, to the other. So in this example, we took off two minutes of that transition time by really engineering efficiency and, and building the student's capacity to transition independently, and then building the teacher's capacity to create those routines. So on any given day, let's say we have about 20 transitions, it's usually more, but if you take two minutes off of 20 transitions per day, that's 40 minutes per day of instructional time that you've gained back in just one day. In one week, saving those two minutes is three hours and 20 minutes of instructional time that you've gained back. Right, Mary? Check with the math person. So just have to check, taught kindergarten. So beyond this specific transition, the, the teacher applied these strategies again to other parts of the day, right? We didn't have to sort of, I didn't have to walk her through this process for other transitions, she was able to do it, do that herself. So that's one example of, of coaching in action, but we do go beyond routines and transitions. So in another example, a teacher and I worked on helping students resolve some conflicts during math workshop. So in this class, they have some time where the students can choose what they want to do during math. But, you know, sometimes there are only four people can do this activity, and three people can do this activity, and the kids were getting into some conflict, right? When five people wanted to do this activity. And we, again with the class, came up with ways for the students to be able to solve conflicts in math workshop. So the coaching cycle ends, and cut to a couple of weeks later, and the teacher's like, you're not going to leave it. We're out at recess, playing Foursquare, you know, the game goes awry. And like, I see the kids huddle up and like, use some of the strategies that we talked about in math to solve the conflict during Foursquare. And she's like, I didn't even need to get involved, except when it all wrapped up to say, like, I'm so proud of you for, you know, you should be so proud for solving that conflict. In another case, I collaborated with a teacher to develop a behavior plan for a dysregulated student who could often be disruptive to the class. So this plan not only helped keep him on task and, and on track, but it, it, of course, improved the learning environment for the whole class. In another example, I helped a teacher increase student engagement by studying the questions that she was asking her students. So what we actually did was we learned to use AI for this. My, my kids helped me, actually. So we would take some of the questions that she was asking, and she wanted to really ask meteor, higher-level thinking questions to get her kids thinking. So we, you know, we put them in AI, and we asked them to, you know, generate higher-level thinking questions using Bloom's taxonomy, and out, you know, comes a bunch of questions that we can choose from, and then we try it, and then all of a sudden, our kids are really engaged in meaningful discussion. And again, that's a skill that she can use, you know, throughout any part of the day. So these are just a few examples of how coaching builds teacher capacity. I would like to spend some more time walking you through this, but again, Jill told me to be brief, it's too late. So, sorry. So just to give you a little data on, and some idea of the number of teachers that I've worked with so far. So last year, I coached 46 teachers individually, 41 in small groups, and gave 20 hours of professional learning. This year, so, so far, I'm coaching 30 teachers individually, 11 in small groups, and 11 hours of professional learning, plus a couple more by Friday. As you know, Friday, we have a district-wide professional learning day, and we're offering different sessions so teachers can really choose what they want to work on. So one session I'm offering is in classroom management, and it fills up within a day. And when I looked at the roster, it's new teachers, it's veteran teachers, it's PT, it's OT, it's special education teachers, it's special area teachers. I mean, it was really an overwhelming response, I'd like to think, because it's my sparkling personality, but really, it's, it's just highlights the ongoing need for teachers to really want to work on classroom management, because they know it's just critical for their student success. So thank you for, for some time this evening. I'd love to introduce Mary Fisher, our math coach. So in just five months, Mary has already made a significant impact, and I know you'd be excited to hear about her work.
Thank you, Jen, and good evening, everyone. My work as a math coach complements Jen's focus on Domain One, while I focus on Domains Two and Three, which are content-specific. Domain Two involves thoughtful planning of daily instruction, considering student needs, content, and teaching strategies. As a district, we prioritize assured student experiences across the three elementary schools, so I emphasize teachers' strong understanding of math content standards in each unit. Effective planning is really at the core of most of my coaching cycles. For example, one of the key standards in third grade, in a third-grade multiplication and division unit is developing an understanding of the meanings of multiplication and division of whole numbers through problems involving equal groups, arrays, and area models. So I often work with new teachers or teachers who are new to the grade level on how to teach the standard. Part of my instruction on the standard is identifying common misconceptions that students might have and effective instructional strategies. In this particular standard, using models with students is important to understand the action of division, and it helps to develop numerical reasoning. Learning how to use models and manipulatives is important when you consider the transfer to other units of math instruction. My action plan for a teacher uses a gradual release model. After we've done our planning, I'll go into a classroom and teach a lesson using models and manipulatives for division. And the next step is for me to observe a lesson and then to provide feedback to the teacher regarding how effective the models and manipulatives were for student understanding for her. Along the way, we are constantly looking at student work to assess the impact of models and their understanding of division. The teacher and student outcomes are both important when I evaluate the effectiveness of my of my coaching cycles. By the end of this cycle, I observed the teacher confidently and effectively using manipulatives and visual models in both whole class and small group instruction. And she used these models to support and extend, support and extend student learning of division concepts. The clarity of her instruction led to improved student learning as seen in student work, where they chose to use number lines, arrays, and cubes to support their reasoning. The success of this coaching cycle was significant because the teacher's understanding of how models support division learning can be applied to many other math standards. She recognized the value of models and she used those strategies in other units as well, like fractions and measurement. At her team's data meeting, she even shared the impact of models on student learning, sparking curiosity among her teammates who chose to explore similar strategies after. In this way, a coach's influence can extend beyond one teacher to an entire grade level and class to an entire grade level. So we've seen what success looks like in individual coaching cycles, but what does the bigger picture tell us? To explore the greater impact, I'll turn it over to our K eight math coordinator, Jen DePonte.
Thank you, Mary. So Jen and Mary just shared some examples within a classroom, but their impact goes beyond to the district level. Jen shared the excitement that's coming on Friday with our PL day and when we plan that day, there's a lot of feedback from administrators, district leaders, teachers to come up with what are the needs of the teachers and where do we see curriculum needs as well. So Jen hinted at those. And in your printout, we have some of the offerings that are gonna be available on Friday. So design thinking with Melinda Meyer is gonna be there. We have, the math team is gonna be presenting something related to building thinking classrooms. Jen mentioned her session and what's exciting is that these are all in-house people. So the support that we're offering is coming from our own people. What's exciting for Jen and Mary is that this is kind of a nice gateway for them to continue their coaching. So when they run a session with, for teachers, we're getting a shared experience at the district level and it really opens opportunities for collaboration and coaching with some of the new teachers who they may not have worked with before. And by new, I mean maybe some of the veterans, maybe some of new to the grade level. So when we have these district-wide days, it really opens up the opportunity for, to continue the coaching relationships. We tried to look at some feedback from teachers who have had coaching experiences with Jen and Mary. And what's interesting, you know, they spoke separately about the focus of domain one, the focus on domain two and three. My view from the top is that you really need all of those together for the greatest success. And what's been nice is to have a, kind of a team of support for teachers is that we can decide at who's gonna work on the domain one, we need that first before we can get to the, the content piece. When the two come together, it's pretty amazing. Jen talked a lot about the example of transitions and routines. She hinted at the managing of materials in a math lesson. The, the management of materials is huge. If you can't organize those snap cubes and get your rulers and you're moving, then your lesson can kind of fall flat because you're managing so many pieces. So when we have that in place, that's when you can really get at the, the, the meat of the lesson, the content. So when those two pieces work together, we're seeing great things for teachers. The quotes that are in both slides are pretty impactful and I love some of the words that teachers are pulling out when they're describing their work with Jen and Mary. When I see learning targets or refined instructional practice, engaged, high student outcomes, those are really powerful statements, but I'm sure you're wondering, how do we quantify that? That's a great narrative, how do we quantify that success? I see it when we have data meetings with teams of teachers. So after we have a math assessment, we often gather as a grade level and we take a look, how are we doing? How is our, how are our lessons? Is our curriculum focused in the right areas? How are the students? How are the teachers? How is this all working? It's not uncommon for a teacher who is new or new to the grade level to see something might be off in the data from the trend of the grade level. And that's to be expected sometime because it takes time with new standards, new lessons. Veteran teachers have the advantage of knowing where things go. They know what to prioritize and that's where the coaches come in. This year, I'm not seeing the, the variance as much. I'm seeing some trends in the grade level that everyone's pretty much on pace and you wouldn't be able to pick out, oh, that's the new teacher, oh, that teacher, she's new to the grade level. We're not seeing that as much and I really think it's because the coaches and the specialists are doing such a great job of being proactive and providing that planning and feedback with the teachers so that they have that opportunity for improved teaching and student learning. From the K eight perspective, the math content support that Mary has been giving to, and along with the specialist, is huge because at the lower grades, we're really focused on improving those foundational standards. Working with a number line may seem very basic, something we use to add, but getting kids comfortable with that, I can see where it goes when you get to the middle grades. A number line is so important with higher concepts like ratios and proportions that if we can really solidify the understanding at the lower grades, the coaches and the specialists are helping us really solidify that and it's super important because it has greater impact as we move on. I think the most powerful feedback we can share regarding the recent success of Jen and Mary's coaching comes from the members of the school community who have experienced it firsthand. So we hope that their testimonials will paint a picture of their impact.
Jen and I had a coaching cycle in the fall about engagement and she has helped me notice so many impactful strategies that I can apply to my daily teaching and embed in my lessons for my students to increase their engagement. And she has given me many opportunities to go observe other teachers with her and have debrief sessions afterwards. And she's also given me the opportunity to observe my students while she does a lesson with them as well, which was really impactful because sometimes you're in the middle of a lesson and you don't realize, wow, all of this growth that my students have been working so hard on and the growth that I've been working so hard to make has really made a difference in their learning and the conversations that they're able to have.
And Mary's really helped me to see what is so important and why this is important and being able to transfer that to my kids' knowledge. And ever since working with Mary, I've noticed that my kids' scores are accelerating, they're doing super well, whether it's multiplication facts or if it's being able to show rounding on a number line, they have improved greatly. So honestly, the collaboration has really transformed me as a teacher and has transformed my kids and has been super beneficial.
Through our conversations and co-teaching together, I really overall learned how to better structure discussions and foster critical thinking skills. On top of that, she provided on-the-spot coaching advice, especially around talk moves, which has helped me facilitate deeper conversations and encourage students to articulate their thought processes more clearly. And she has encouraged me to use quick checks also to help, and just data to guide my planning for small groups, which has really allowed me to tailor my instruction more effectively and address students' needs in a timely manner. So she's been a huge help.
I think these coaching roles have really provided us the opportunity to have like on-demand training on the spot where they're getting the feedback and the support that they need to be successful right away. Outcome really be teachers feeling really comfortable and trusting in the system because we are providing them the opportunity to work with a trusted colleague to grow their own practice and be more effective in the classroom in a way that's not evaluative, which allows them to be more vulnerable in the coaching cycle to really help impact student learning.
Throughout working with Jen, I, I really learned that it's not just about delivering what you need to deliver, like the content, but it's about creating that warm, welcoming, loving, supportive environment to help students feel responsible for their own growth and empowered. And her, her guidance was invaluable, her support was amazing, and she's really helped me grow my confidence, refine my practice, and most importantly, strengthen the sense of community that I have in my classroom.
As a first-year teacher, the journey can often feel overwhelming, but having the support of the coaches has been incredibly reassuring and valuable. Coaching has had a positive impact on my students by helping them become more independent and engaged in their learning.
That's okay. There's a thank you slide. So, thank you for the opportunity for letting us.
Jen and I had a coaching cycle in the fall about engagement and she has helped me notice.
We're excited that we got a chance to explain all the great work that we do. We've put a lot of thought into it and we're like, this is pretty amazing when you think back to it and hearing the teachers and seeing their feedback, it really is, it's amazing. And it's, it's a system of support, so that, that slide with the PL offerings, like that is quite impressive when you take a step back and look at it and to have the coaches support that work with the teachers and the students, we're excited about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
Thank you for that, that was a great, great presentation, nice and concise, I like that, but thorough, thorough. A few questions, starting with domain one and focusing on the learning environment. I noticed that one of the points for the learning environment was the physical environment which the children learn. And that's something I've thought about a lot recently in reading about, especially as it relates to the young boys, overstimulation, overstimulation visually. And I have two young, I've, I've had two children go through the Canadian Public School System and I have two elementary-age children now. And I must say that it's something that concerns me. When I go to an open house, I don't pay attention. I've been through it four times, so I kinda don't pay attention anyway, but like, all of the visual stimulation on the wall, it really is distracting, right? And so as we think about young, young boys and as I looked in sort of the, the, the photos, right, that were included in the presentation, I noticed it as well, right? There's a lot of like, really overstimulation of, of the young children. Is that, when does that become part of the physical environment and when do we start focusing on that? And I realize that this program is targeted more towards younger teachers, but I think it's probably some of the, the more experienced teachers are probably the worst offenders from what I've seen, right? Because it's just been, that's just been the custom throughout education for decades, right? Is that, has that been a focus and is there any sort of plan to address that or to, to educate teachers about that, about that overstimulation and effects on, on young boys especially, children in general, especially young boys?
Thank you. It's an interesting question. I know that we just really talked about new teachers. We, we do work with, with all teachers, veteran teachers, exemplary teachers. And it's interesting, a lot of what you see in the classrooms are things like anchor charts, number lines, things that are used for, for instruction. So it, it's interesting, it's something to think about. When I'm thinking about the learning environment and when I'm looking around, I'm knowing that that anchor chart is helping for reading, this is helping for foundation. So while it does, it can often seem like a lot, it does always have a purpose, but it's, it's something interesting to think about.
Yeah, and obviously like you can have the multiplication tables or things like that. I mean, sort of like there's random quotes or like just pictures or just, there's a lot, right? And I think as you sort of, I encourage you to pay attention to it as, as you go in these classrooms and, and think about it in the context of, you know, is this an overstimulation of, of some of these young lines and distracting them from, from paying attention to actually what the teacher is saying, right? And so, and I think it's obviously does, you know, it does a disservice to our students obviously because it's distracting, but also to our teachers in that it's, they're competing with their own, with their own decorations for the child's attention, right? And so, so that's one thing I think, I think as we think about sort of the physical environment and the learning environment, I would like to sort of really district-wide focus more on that because I think it's, I think it's very important. And so, and there's been a lot of studies in that. We, we see it through, from elementary school and I've seen it through high school, right? And so, I mean, I would encourage, to whatever extent you can sort of reach out within, within your professional networks or sort of studies, research that's available to you to sort of dig deeper into that and think about that as we coach our teachers and, and as we, as we optimize the learning environment. And then I guess the other question I had, two other questions I have. One, as you sort of lay out the, the number of teachers that you've done or classroom-coached by the numbers, right? From last year to this year, obviously we're only partially through the year, so obviously the, the number of hours wouldn't be the same. The teachers coached individually is much less. Is that because we haven't gotten around to all the teachers or because there are less teachers that will be coached this year or how does that?
Yeah, it's because it's February and we just, there are some teachers that I'll start working with now through the spring.
So I guess, so you start working, okay, so it's not continuous throughout the year, people start at different phases.
Right, so, so sometimes it's continuous, sometimes I'm doing some, like so for example, the example with math, right? I'm coaching a teacher, let's say in the beginning of the year, who's working on materials management and routines and things like that in math. So I'm doing that real heavy coaching. And then we do that six-week cycle, Mary might come in towards the end and she is gonna pick up the heavy coaching on the math content. I, I sort of take more of a consult role at that point. I'm still in the classroom, I'm still touching base with the teacher. Mary does a coaching cycle and then maybe I'll weave back in because maybe we're working at that point on something like student engagement. So it's, it's cyclical and sometimes it is, it takes a break and then we pick up, just depending on what the students need in that class, what the teacher needs.
Perfect. And then finally, Mary, what, you know, you've been here, I guess, five months for, in the district, is that what it is? What deficiencies have you identified, I guess, in sort of, in our math instruction at the elementary school level? Are there any common, are there any common themes?
I mean, the common themes, I think, and this is really coming from teachers, would be just small group instruction, just how can we up the small group instruction? And that can be the engagement, it could be questioning, could be using formative assessments. But I, especially in my year twos, I find that that's something that they really want to work on. Year one, I'm finding it's really the content, it's the curriculum, they just wanna understand it. They wanna me to walk them through some lessons, they want me to come in and, and watch them do lessons and give them feedback. So that's what I'm noticing as far as trends in year one and year two.
Have you coordinated any with perhaps, you know, the, the head of the math department at the high school or just had those discussions to really explore? I think we had, when we had the review, Jill, if you, Dr. Prant, excuse me. I think they mentioned that one of the deficiencies they've noticed was fractions, I think is one thing that we've identified, right? Is that, is that something that we could sort of, you know, reinforce or think about, rethink how we're teaching fractions? Because it's, you know, it's, it's manifesting itself even at the high school level. So assuming it's, you know, obviously you learn in third, fourth grade fractions and so, you know, there's, there seems like there's some sort of deficiency.
Well, that would be, that would be more me than Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay. Cause I, seeing the K eight piece and then I am in, I consult with Becky Pavia at the high school. And it's funny, we, the strategies for fraction instruction that we see at the middle school that has been powerful is anchored in what's happening in third and fourth grade. So if anything, we've done a lot to reinforce what's happening at the elementary grades, we're pretty happy with that. I think we're now bridging the gap because we're seeing those are the priority standards once they get to the middle school and that's where we're finding a lot of the needs. So when I think of the work that the specialists at the intermediate and middle school are doing, we're doing a lot of fraction work now, we're doing a lot of looking at the progression of the standards so that the teachers understand what the experiences were before and where they're going after. So we're pretty, we're hitting that pretty hard at grades five through eight right now. It's driving a lot of student goals for intervention. They're doing a really nice job of extending that up to like even eighth grade with like solving equations and things like that. So I'm, I'm pretty excited with what's happening at the elementary, so to really firm that up and so that the students value some of the, the models and the reasoning that goes into it, we want them to carry that over to grades five through eight. And then of course, carrying that on, continuing those conversations with the high school. Becky and I do that.
And how long has that been sort of underway? I mean, where, you know, where do we, where do we see that show up, I guess, along the, along the K through twelve life of a student? Or for example, did it start two years ago, so we're starting to see it in, in eighth grade that people, that we've reinforced?
The refinement, I think the refinement for the, the elementary piece has been probably like the last three to four years with some new, new lessons and new like, the last three to four years with some new, new lessons and new units. This year, the end of last year, we kind of identified it at Saks. We started seeing, just looking at some of the, what were the plans for students for differentiation? They were really grounded in whole numbers and we're, we're recognizing that we're, we're trying to shift that with teachers as well. So, that's, we're hitting it harder this year. This is only my second year in the coordinator role, so we're hitting it hard this year at the middle school.
Okay, so we haven't seen it sort of, we haven't seen the, the facts, the results of, of this flow through the, flow through to high school yet, is what I'm asking, I guess.
Not based on anything I've done.
Yeah, okay. It's recent. Well, it's good and bad, right? But yes. A lot of upside, there's a lot of upside for it.
Fingers crossed, stay tuned.
Yeah, great. Well, no, thank you very much. And I appreciate this, it's very helpful to understand sort of the importance of, of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thanks for all the great work and the presentation. So, you talked a little bit about how your coaching is helping individual teachers and then they're sharing information with other teachers. What are the ways in which that happens? And are there ways that we can increase, you know, those connections between teachers in terms of learning?
Yeah, so, part of what, you know, we try to do in coaching teachers is build those, those teacher leaders. So, oftentimes, I will take a teacher to see another teacher who is just an expert at something in their classroom and we'll go observe. That teacher then sort of becomes kind of like the go-to person for whatever we're, we're working on. And then, it kind of happens organically that other teachers will go in and say, oh my gosh, she's doing something really great in her classroom. So, we're sort of building that capacity. I like to think of it like, as a bee and you're just sort of pollinating and you're taking all the great things that are happening in one room and you're just spreading them out throughout all three schools essentially.
Thanks. And are the, just to dig into that a little bit more, like, does some of that happen at professional learning days? Or, like, are there ways that we could facilitate more of that happening, I guess, is my question? Or does it just happen organically?
No, no. A, a lot of it will happen in professional learning. So, we've had a lot of professional learning recently on engagement and that professional learning provides that shared experience for every teacher, you know, K four. And then, we can coach right into that. So, everyone's had that experience and then we can differentiate our coaching based on, I'm working with this veteran teacher, I'm working with this new teacher, and it's this, this shared experience that we're then coaching right into.
Thank you for coming and sharing about the coaching, coaching experiences. I have a question about how the coach, the classroom coaching work for Jen compare, or how the relationship you have with teachers is different than the relationship that principals have with teachers and in terms of the amount of time you spend with teachers versus principals and the different natures of the relationships.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's really a peer coaching role. So, the way it's different is that, you know, a teacher and I can work on an aspect of, so I would say like, I want to see the worst part of your day, right? I want to see the hardest part of your day, I want to see what is, what is going bad. And we dig in and we work on that. And then, I communicate with the administrator and I'll, and I meet with them, you know, too much, maybe. And, 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 you know, the teacher knows that, you know, I'm going to tell Zoe that we're working on this and this and this. So, then, when the administrator comes in to observe, they have that lens of, okay, they're working on, you know, student engagement, they're working on, you know, turn and talk. I can observe and look for that and give my feedback into that. Also, evaluate into that. So, where my position and my relationship with the teacher is not evaluative, I am, we are always evaluating, right? But it is not evaluative in nature. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And then, I also had a question for Jen, or sorry, for Mary on the, the, the way that a math coach interacts with the classroom as opposed to the way that a math interventionist interacts with the classroom.
So, I, I think of the math interventionist as more of student-facing. They're working more with students on intervention. They're also holding the data, so they'll do data meetings for grade levels. And then, I'm working with individual teachers on their practices and on the content. I'm mostly working with new teachers, so it's a little different at, at each school. There's one school that has a lot of new teachers. And so, we've broken up some of that work. And so, they are coaching as well and I'm coaching those new teachers. And then, there's another school where there's not a lot of new teachers. So, I'm just holding the new teachers and they're coaching everybody else. So, we share a lot of the coaching responsibility, but when it comes to student and student intervention, that's, that's their gig.
So, you're most, mostly working with an entire classroom and with the teacher as opposed to the interventionist, which is working more one-on-one with-
Yeah, but I'm working through the teacher. So, it might be a whole class, it might be a small group, it might be just planning, co-planning, just collaborating on an idea that they have. But it's really working on the teacher's practice in domain two and three.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, the other piece is the specialist, they, like, they have three roles. So, they work on curriculum, coaching, and intervention. So, they might also support some of the coaching, but as Mary said, like, they are, she is, works with the teachers solely. It does benefit the students, but the specialists do have a piece with the teachers, with the student, with the curriculum, so they have like, the broad overview.
Thank you guys for this. Quick one for Dr. Bliss. Dr. Bliss, you mentioned that new teachers come to us having only taken or taken taught one class in math and one in behavioral management. Why is that? That feels woefully insufficient? And is that a, is that a Fairfield County thing? Is it a state of Connecticut thing? What's, what's going on there?
That is a great question that probably somebody else would answer better than I because I was seriously surprised by that as well. But I do think at state of Connecticut, they usually set a lot of the standards in terms of what is happening for those classrooms across. And I think it's something that we need to look at, you know? It is, it is, I know there's a lot that they need to learn and one of the hard things about being an elementary instructor is that they've got to learn science, math, writing, reading, you know? It's a really tough job. They've got a lot. So, I'm sure that's part of it, is just time, but I, it's a good, good question.
It's really the teacher preparatory programs. So, it really goes back to the universities and it's giving the feedback to the universities about the courses that are required of teachers. So, you could imagine that there's probably more courses in the teaching of reading for an elementary school teacher than there is for the teaching of math and for behavior. But they also have one course in teaching science and one course in teaching social studies because they have to teach all of those content areas. And then, they usually will have courses in developmental stages that kids go through. There's going to be courses in psychology. So, it's a mixture of courses that a person would take for their elementary preparatory classes to become a teacher.
I get that. I just think that on the classroom management portion is just, I mean, that seems entirely insufficient, but. So, as far as the coaches are concerned, and maybe this is a better question for Dr. Lutzi or Dr. Bliss, but, you know, we're, we're going down this kind of coaching path. Jen's been in, you know, in this role now a year and a half and Mary since the start of the year. We have a budget request for a new coach. We deferred another coach. As this becomes more prevalent, I guess, what, when we think about these coaches and understanding that there are differences between math coaches, classroom coaches, other coaches potentially, what are we generally looking for? What are the traits in life sort of experiences and teaching experiences that we're looking for? Like, what, what do we think makes a good coach?
Do you want me to? I mean, I just feel like a big part of it is the relationship building. So, what I see, the real strengths of both Mary and Jen are their incredible ability to connect with teachers, to establish trust and have those relationships because you need to be vulnerable. You need to be able to, as Jen said, it's my worst day, you know? This is the biggest problem I have. And that can be hard when you're being evaluated to put that part forward. So, that would be number one. And I think the other thing that is so important is that ability to use the coaching strategies. I mean, they're both very skilled and they've had a lot of training and coaching strategies and using those. So, somebody who really can use those effectively with other, other people, other teachers, those would be probably, yeah. The content knowledge, obviously, we look for that, but they're exemplary teachers. I would just say the last thing that probably I know about both of them is they, they really rose to these positions by being amazing teachers. So, they have that ability to bring to each classroom.
Yep. And I would simply add, yeah, being a master teacher is the price of entry, but it's more than that, right? It's, we have a framework that we use and in this framework, the folks that we look to identify are consciously competent. Like, they're excellent master teachers and they've, they know why. And that's an ongoing process that we learn over time more and more as you, as you do this work. But there are some outstanding superb teachers out there who make all the right moves at all the right times and can't tell you why. They're unconsciously competent. They don't make the best coaches, they're, they're best teachers. Best coaches are those that make all of those moves and then are reflective enough to understand sort of why they made them, how they made them, which then helps them to translate that into other people's practice.
Thank you guys. So, it's probably more of a comment than a question, but Dr. Bliss, you, you mentioned, and Phil mentioned, one hour, you know, one course per, you know, per teacher. And Jen, you mentioned that you kind of go through in a linear fashion, sometimes you're overlapping, but you really kind of work through the new teachers as you go? And so, we're sixty percent of the year in and you haven't hit all the new teachers as far as I understand. Is that right?
No, I've, I've hit all the, the new teachers and then I don't just work with new teachers. I do also work with veteran teachers.
Sure.
Yeah. So, I've, I've hit all the new teachers.
But, 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 but as far as you're, you're kind of working your way through and there's still other teachers that you would love to be able to work with or-
Yes.
Or instruct. Have we ever considered, and I'm also assuming there are common themes depending on, right?
Yep.
Have we ever considered documenting your knowledge, your, your understanding of how to solve themes, right, that we see across all teachers so that they can read almost an, called an instruction manual or tips and tricks, right, in the beginning of the year? And then, start implementing them so that as you're working through, they've already gotten some of the baseline upfront and you can then help tweak them going along? Is that something that we might consider?
That would be nice.
Time constraints on the rest of it, of course.
No, no.
Your, your day job, but yes.
Yeah, no, it would be great. It, it doesn't necessarily just work that way.
Okay.
There are a lot of wonderful manuals, manuals, for lack of a better word, out there. I use a lot of those books in my work with teachers. But really, to translate that to your classroom with those twenty kids in front of you is just very different than it looks on paper. So, it's really about guiding that teacher through understanding what that teacher's strengths are and areas for growth. And, and helping them guide through, using those, you know, practices that are, you know, research-based and tried and true. I really wish it was just as simple as that. I would give everybody the manual and then I would, you know, I'd go work in Darien or something. Just kidding, just kidding.
What? I just want to add one thing to that, not that it answers your question, but I was really excited that this summer we were able to add an entire day for new teachers and Jill Karanti put that together out of this need and seeing that new teachers are coming to us with less experience. So, Jen was there, Jen was there, we had all the coaches, they had an entire day, two days if they want, you know, we really, really put a lot into that. So, I think they, they started the year, they hit the ground running in a different way than we have in the past, which was great.
Great, excellent.
I do want to add one more piece. What we're finding really successful as well actually is the hiring of our building subs. So, it's been really an interesting research that we've done. When we started to implement building subs in each of the buildings, they're certified teachers and they are actually starting off and moving into a lot of our long-term sub positions and then eventually they're becoming classroom teachers. And we're doing a lot of onsite training with our building subs day to day. We invite them to professional learning. We make sure that if they're a long-term sub, that we're getting into those classrooms and providing them the instruction. We also see that with our interns. So, when we can get those interns that are residents, that's a really incredible program because they're actually in that classroom for a period of time observing that teacher. They're also out in the building. But it just helps when we can bring in teachers and train them right here and then turn around and hire them. And so, we are seeing a lot of success. And I don't have the statistics right in front of me, but I do know that we've been hiring a lot of our building substitutes eventually into teaching positions. And then, they still come for all of our new training and, and all of that. And I do want to emphasize too that every teacher that we hire that is considered a new teacher, years one through four, some of them do come with us to experience. But they may not have earned tenure in another district or they're coming from another state and they have to start over with their year one. So, I do want to reference that not everybody is coming out of college and getting hired as, as a new teacher too.
Hi. Thank you so much for this presentation. I just have a quick question, Jen. When we look at these numbers with the forty-six last year and the thirty that we worked with this year, are, how are we identifying the teachers? Are they self-advocating for themselves? Are the principals, is Jill identifying them? Like, how are we choosing which teachers are receiving your support?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, of course, you know, all new teachers, we're going to make sure right in the beginning of the year that we meet with them and just kind of assess the needs. And then, there's a variety of other ways. So, administrator might ask me to work with a teacher. Teachers will come to me. As a matter of fact, when I first started the role, I was like panicked that nobody was going to want to work with me. Like, are they going to want to work with me? And we had so many teachers who were asking for coaching that I have to make decisions about who I work with and, and then it's really about the students, right? And what is going to have the greatest impact on, on the students? So, it's just a combination of a lot of things, but it really goes back to the kids and, and what teachers and what classroom can we have the, the greatest impact in.
And then, when you talk about the cycle, so is it one cycle with a teacher and then they kind of go like to the back of a line or-
Right.
Is this, is this really seventy-six teachers?
Right. So, it can look very different. If you have a, let's say, it's a brand-new, right out of college to teacher, you might be going into one cycle and then you might be cycling into something else and something else. And they, they just might need that, quite a few cycles together. Other teachers, it's a coaching cycle and then it's a break and it's time for that expand period. And you're observing and watching as they expand that, what you worked on to other areas of, of the day. And then, sometimes there's those natural breaks or there's natural times to pick back up again. So, you know, spring will be coming, right? That's when, you know, a lot of behavior starts to creep up or all of a sudden we're back on the playground again full-time and we forgot how to solve problems. So, you know, we'll get into more coaching cycles as that happens. So, there's no real right or wrong, there's no real definite answer. It's, just depends on the teacher. Yeah.
I do also want to add, Lara, that in addition, we are having ongoing conversations with the specialist as well because they do play a huge role. So, Jen will be sharing with a reading specialist or a math specialist or the writing specialist some of the things that she's been working on with a new teacher so that when they start coaching them in the area of math, they're now saying, okay, so you did this and now we're going to start working about what that looks like in our math workshop. And what does that look like in our readers workshop? What does that look like in our writers workshop? And that's how we can kind of keep that coaching going and diving more deeply into the content at the same time.
Perfect. That was my next question actually for Mary. Are you, you're working with like, the special teachers as well, not just our general teachers or one type of teacher? Is that-
Yes.
Like, you're working with the math interventionists as well in helping them or you're just working with the general teachers teaching math in, in like, second grade?
I've only worked with general ed teachers at this point, but at PLs, I've definitely worked with special ed teachers as well. And I just, I meet with the math specialists every week. But yeah.[1724.28]
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks. Jen, can you expand on some of the coaching you did with the group that was having conflict deciding what math table?
Yeah. So in, you know, math workshops, sometimes there's an opportunity for students to choose what they want to work on. For example, so there's this game and there's four people can go there and, you know, three people can go. And what the teacher's noticing is when, you know, five kids went to the table where only four kids could be, they didn't know what to do. They were running to her. They didn't know what to do when they played a game and somebody lost, right? And it was like, they didn't know how to solve those problems. So we used a similar sort of model that we used in the transition example. We kind of circled up and we're like, all right, what are we noticing? What's happening? And the kids came up with solutions. And then we use one of the tools that we use called the blueprint, which helps kids use empathy and perspective-taking to solve problems. So they think about, all right, what am I thinking? What's the other person thinking? And what's a good solution? So you know, you have to work through that and practice that for a while, a while. But eventually what she saw was not only were they able to do it in math, but organically she observed it out in recess.
Have you ever worked with recess monitors?
I've done some professional learning for our teaching assistants. Yeah, I've done in both years and they found it very, very helpful, yeah. I would do, I would love to do more if, I don't think they're contracted to like be at our faculty meetings and things like that if I'm, if I'm right, Jill. But when I do get a chance to work with them, we do, we can provide some opportunities for that. But yeah, it's definitely something we could do, we would love to do more of given more hours in the day.
So we provide professional learning to our teaching assistants in August. They come in a day before the students arrive. And then actually at the elementary level, we use those conference days. And so when the kids leave and the teachers are conferring with parents, we actually group the teaching assistants and we provide a tremendous amount of professional learning to them for those four days.
Okay. Jen, I also have to say that's a very cool mug that you have.
Thank you.
Must come from a really cool.
It did, it came from a really, really cool.
Practically perfect parent.
You can do hard things.
I just want to, sorry, this is circling back a little bit, but Phil had asked the question about, you know, the classes that are taught in teacher preparation and around math specifically. I was wondering if part of what's at play here is that what the way that math is taught or the way that teachers are supposed to teach math according to teacher prep is different potentially than what we do since we write our own curriculum. And there are elements of it in terms of, you know, our use of manipulatives and models or different elements of it that there's, there's just more content, the more that we need to teach our teachers that's specific to New Canaan, that that's also they're not getting during teacher prep. And I was wondering if that is, if that's a part of it or if it's not.
It's been a long time, but when I took the class. But I think, I think there's, the class is grounded in the standards. So I think that's where the similarity is. The problem is the breadth of it. So if you think about one semester and we think about how many standards there are in grades K through four, there's just a lot. So I don't think the, I think there's common language in the standards. I think there's a common appreciation of using models and manipulatives to instruct. I mean, it was a really long time when I took my classes, but I remember using those tools back then. So I just think it's, there's, there's so much and the teachers have to put the pieces together. So, I mean, and even when we think about like when we support teachers like here, like one year is fine, we want to really support them for two years, three years, when you can start to make those connections. Because one semester is just a short amount of time for five years of instruction with all those standards.
Great, thanks, anybody else? This has been great, really appreciate it. Oh, sorry. Oh, Penny wants, Penny, you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, thank you for the presentation. It's incredibly helpful. But what do you think the optimal level of staffing is for classroom coaches? Just at the, I said, at the elementary level. We added one in our budget for next year, but I didn't know if you had any comments on that.
I think all the principals in the back row would be able to answer that question.
Penny, everyone slowly turned their head towards me, so. You can't see me right now. I think that, as in all things, we, we've had good, excellent success, as you heard tonight, in the program that we have with Jen and Mary. And we think that the iterative move of bringing, having another next year to continue to build on that is the right move. And then we're going to continue to evaluate. It's hard to say, here's the optimum number or amount. But I think that, you know, it's encouraging and reinforcing to hear the great success that they're having and also to hear the ways that they're positively working with folks who are already at the schools, the specialists, you know, the math specialists, the writing specialists, the reading specialists. So there's, it's, they don't work in isolation. And so we always want to, we'll take, as any complex system, we take a step forward and we'll reevaluate again and see how we're doing and see if more investment there makes sense or if there's other opportunities to continue to improve. So I don't, you know, I don't want to put a number on it. I don't think that that's the right thing to do. But I do think that the addition of the coach into next year clearly, you know, given this feedback and what we know to be true, is the right, right thing for our district right now.
Thanks.
Round two. Any else have any questions, comments? Yeah, super helpful, thank you. We've all been really eager to get you guys up here and it's relatively new to the district. And while we have the full faith that you guys are making all the right calls, it's good to be able to have you up here. And I hope that there are members of the town bodies outside of the Board of Ed that are also listening in because it was certainly, I mean, it's obvious that this has been impactful and very, very confident that adding another one was the right call and just kind of seeing where this goes. The one thing that actually it's interesting that Matt commented on the physical environment piece because it wasn't something that I was expecting to see in this, but that's something that has been on my mind and things that I've read about and comments that I've heard from parents and just, you know, I had young kids that had gone through the elementary school and now I have one at the middle school. And it's, it's interesting that the, maybe I'm just easily overwhelmed, but I do find some of these classrooms to be like really overwhelming and for kids that either have sensory issues or just kids being kids in general that have difficulty kind of sitting down and paying attention. And I notice it's actually less so at the high school, but even going through the, through the middle school, like from one classroom to the next, like some classrooms I'll find to be somewhat zen and I kind of want to hang out there. Other ones I walk into and I can't wait to get out, like it just, I don't. Is there like a guideline or something that, is there kind of like a framework where people like learn or teachers when they come in, they say, look, this is kind of some of the guidelines for setting up a classroom based on your, you know, the age group or like the type of classroom? Because I agree, I mean, most of the stuff that I see in there, I could tie it to, there's usually a reason, but some of the classrooms just have so much stuff that I, that have nothing to do with what I know that person is teaching. So I'm just wondering if like, is there a guideline? And if not, is it something that we can maybe delve a little bit deeper into?
Yeah, we don't have a guideline, but I think it's a really interesting thing to explore, absolutely, yeah.
I think I made a comment to someone, either maybe you or maybe Dr. Bliss a while ago, where I read this like article on Norwegian classrooms where there's just like nothing. And I don't know if that's the answer either because it looked a little boring, I'd probably fall asleep. It looked more like a present, that's not nice, it's very nice. Soft hues and off whites and grays, but somewhere in between, you know, like, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's interesting and so of course now I'm going to go home and look up all the research because I think, you know, we need to look at what works and what doesn't and does it have an impact or not? So I'll get back to you on that.
And I have girls, so I don't have any of these issues, but you know.
Matt, you can come up to me.
Matt, yeah.
Good evening. I just have to add, we have to remember that elementary teachers teach everything. And the kids are in the classroom, that one room, they're in that room a good part of the day. So while I understand the stimulation part of it, teachers are often changing those posters, those anchor charts that are up there to go with what they're teaching. Whereas when you go to, because I taught at SAC, so, you know, when I was teaching just math, I just had math stuff up on the wall. So if you're an elementary teacher and you've got those kids for six and a half hours, well, it's less than six and a half hours with specials and lunch, but you've got those kids a good part of the day, you've got multiple things that you've got to be teaching, that's where a lot of that comes in. So we have to remember, it's not, you know, apples to apples when you're looking at a middle school, high school classroom versus an elementary classroom. But again, I would like to just reiterate that a lot of that stuff is changing based on what unit they're in, based on what they're teaching. You know, when I started teaching, there was no such thing as anchor charts. So my classroom was, had a whole bunch of stuff up on it that probably had nothing to do with what I was teaching. Today, teachers put, use materials that help their students to learn. So that's what I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, it's helpful. Thank you. But yeah, no, I'm a huge advocate of coaches. I have an executive coach myself, I've used them for years. The best people have coaches, just kind of constantly honing your craft. And we know that teachers have to deal with a lot these days and it's just more and more and more and more. So the more help we can give you, the better. So thank you. And thank you all for coming as well. You don't stay for the budget part, unless you want to.
No, they asked in the beginning.
They wanted, yeah.
But won't it be rude if we leave?
Yeah, we were into the.
No, no, it would be smart.
All right.
I just put a statement of accounts on for Sean so everyone can leave when he talks, but couldn't make.
Poor Sean, everyone always leaves when he starts talking. It's all right, we love you. Speaking of, get a budget update, Dr. Lutzey?
Yep, as we'll do each of our Board of Education meetings between now and April when the budget's approved, just a very brief update, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, we are presenting to the Board of Finance. We are the only presenters that night, so I hope and expect we'll be up right at seven. We will be covering all dimensions of our budgets, over the operating, we'll talk about the ISF, we'll talk about capital. It is our first presentation to the Board of Finance in this cycle, so questions will probably be reserved to the end and then probably sent over to us as well, as you know, for the rest of this month. We will be with the Board of Finance early March. Board of Finance will be voting to approve whatever the budget's going to be and then it moves on to the Town Council. Sean and I were able to meet with Joe Spurgeon, our insurance consultant, a week or two ago. Joe shared with us that our December claims were high, was the highest December we've had, but we're still doing okay. So we feel confident about the budget number that we have. A little disappointed that we're not, not in a position where we feel comfortable bringing it down at all, but we'll continue to monitor it and keep an eye on it and see where it trends. The first three months were good enough that this number being high, we're still coming out to the good by a fair amount. So we're just going to keep watching it. And hopefully if things trend back to the mean, we'll be able to bring it down a bit when we get into the March conversation. So that would be with the Town Council. We also had a liaison meeting with members of the Town Council and the Board of Finance. Hugo, Phil, and Erica were able to join us. And we had an opportunity just to talk about the budget, to ask them to really see what questions they might have and try to get those questions up front. Because the more questions we get earlier in the process, I think the smoother the process goes as we go through to the end. So it was a good, good conversation with the group. They were able to ask some questions about the added classroom coach. They asked some questions about the interventionist of the high school, how insurance was doing and just those kinds of things. So just to start that conversation with them, it was very positive. So we are looking forward to tomorrow night and continuing our conversation about the 25, 26 budget. So all are welcome to attend. There is a Zoom link as well if you're not able to come in person. And that's right on the agenda, which is right on the website. And of course I can get any board members who would like to use that instead, so welcome to do that.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, comments from the public. Would anybody like to report to the board? No, thank you. Announcements in future business?
Sure, very briefly, we had our first snow day of the year last, on Thursday, as all know. So that means our school year will end one day later. So now we're, I think, the Wednesday of June. Is it the 17th, I believe? I'll check. But we do update our calendar online. So when we have a cancellation, we do change that, adjust it, put it up. So if anyone wants to know, that district calendar does stay updated. So we, as we work through. We, there were forecasts for a couple of more storms this week. We were looking at something Tuesday to Wednesday, Thursday to Friday. The Tuesday to Wednesday seems to be moderating a bit and staying south, so we'll continue to keep an eye on it, but I think we'll be okay there. If we do wind up with a storm that goes Thursday into Friday and have to cancel our professional learning day, then typically what we've done is move that to the end of the school year. So that would be a day after the student's last day would be a professional learning day for the staff. Tonight, over at the hockey rink, it's New Canaan Hockey playing against Darien Hockey, which is a pretty big deal since we are numbers one and two in the state. Bill is supposed to text me if we win and not if we don't. I, let's see, I don't think I've heard, I haven't heard from him yet, but I'm keeping an eye on it. Hopefully we'll prevail, but keeping an eye on that. We also have a basketball game going on down in the gym right now, which is Teacher Appreciation Night, which is a nice thing they started a few years ago where the teachers are invited to go and during halftime, they say a few things to, in appreciation of our teachers and the work that they do here at the high school.